I'd like to call to order the boardwork session for June. And the first item on the agenda is the 2020 budget calendar. Tom, would you take that, please?
On page three of your board packet, you'll see that we're entering that time of year in preparation for the 2020 budget. Just as a refresher, we prepare three budgets for the board. The first is the operating budget, which is all our expenses and attracts the revenue and those types of things. Then we have the capital budget. And once those two are created and we get a little bit further down the road on those being approved, then we create the financial budget. Some organizations refer to that as the cash flow budget. And given that our finances are because of the expenditure of the $4 million for the stump dump, the cash flow budget will be a very important budget for this coming year and for later years because we will have to very closely track our cash flow. So all three of those budgets will be prepared. If you turn to page five, you can see the calendar that we are proposing. This is a very similar calendar as has been used in previous years. Doesn't mean that it can't be changed, but it is the same calendar that we have been using for last several years. You'll see that on July one, we start where we go to all the committees and ask for their input on capital projects and on operating projects. An example of an operating project from a couple of years ago is the Lakes Committee talked about increasing the number of lake rangers. So that would not impact the capital budget. It would impact the operating budget. So we don't limit the committees just to, just to capital projects. The recommendations from the committees are then submitted back to management by eight sixteen. On eight nineteen, we start working, the department heads start working on the capital projects, getting bids on those. And then on the twenty ninth of August, they start working on the budget itself, the operating budget. The operating budget is, is the one that takes the most amount of time. It's the largest, the most comprehensive. We have them start on August twenty ninth because we want them to be, we want to be beyond the season. For, for example, for recreation, they are busiest during the summer. So we try and delay it as long as possible so that they can be custom, they can be focused on our membership. And then it starts to taper off a little bit at, towards the end of August, and that's when we have them start working on those things. You'll see in here, we also prepare a fee schedule. Those are the recommendations, whether there would be an increase or maybe there's a recommendation that there won't be an increase. It then goes through a review process. So everybody is aware, when the, when the budgets are reviewed, they're reviewed by the CFO, Dwayne, and myself. We go line item by line item, month by month. We look at every single number. Our managers that prepare the budget, they've come a long way in the last several years, but you still have some that are better at numbers than others. So we really, this, the review timeframe is where we can really refine it and so forth. We submit the budget, the operating and the capital budget on ten twenty-five to the Board of Directors. Internal purposes, on the thirty first of that same month, we do a practice. It's an internal practice, but we want to just make sure that they're all ready to go and ready for the presentation. The practices were a little bit more important several years ago when they were about three or four years, four years ago prior to my arrival, the department heads did not write their budget at all. So it was three years ago when they had to write their budget and then present their budget to the board, that was a significant shift for them. So we would do practices. The practices are a little bit less important now because now we've had a very stable senior staff for several years. And so the practices are a little bit less important, but practice is always a good thing. We're proposing then on November seventh, we will present to the entire board. Presentations would begin at nine AM. Feedback and adjustments would be made. And by the, one week later, we would have the work session meeting at six PM at Reardon Hall. By then, the financial budget would be prepared. And we would present to the entire community. And then assuming everything goes well and the board is pleased with the budget, it would then be approved at the November twenty first meeting at six PM. Any questions?
I do. I have one on the fee schedule. It says competitive market analysis completed. Who does that? Are those employees that do that or is that an outside company?
We do that internally. But we include in the, in the board packet, we include the competitive market analysis. We've had board members double check on their own to confirm that the numbers are accurate from our competition and so forth. But we do it internally to save the funds.
Okay. Can we know ahead of time which departments are having a market analysis?
Absolutely. It's, it's typically golf, rec, F and B.
Some lakes.
And lakes, we haven't done lakes previously.
It's in the rec, under rec now, the marina.
I think that's it. That's the only ones that we've done previously unless you would, you feel that we should add an additional one.
Actually, that covers everything I was thinking.
Was that?
That covers everything I was thinking.
Okay. All right. Yeah, once you hit golf and rec, that's pretty.
Yeah.
That's pretty, that covers just about everybody. But we'll include that as we always do, just so you can see. Now, one of the conversations Jerry had with Ruth and myself is on the meeting on November we typically are giving each of the department heads about a half an hour to make their presentation. The reason why we're having each of the department heads come in each month and make a presentation at the GM meeting is because in previous years, about half of that half an hour budget review was on operational questions that really didn't have too much to do with the budget, but on departmental structure. So what we're trying to do is, is have those questions taken care of months prior to the budget review so that the, the thirty minutes of presentation can be focused strictly on the budget, hopefully. Since we have twelve department heads, you're looking at a half an hour. I have, in my previous community, we made it a two day process and it was more of a been a, more of an hour long presentation. That is an option for the board, but it's, it's a grind. So that's, that's at your, at your discretion, the board's discretion as to what they want to do. Some board members at my previous location felt that thirty minutes was shortchanging the department. But when you're talking about twelve departments, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot, it's a very long day, even at a half hour each. Any comments, questions?
I like the calendar. Thank you for that. So should we assume that there, that the budget will not include any sort of assessment increase?
We always write the budget assuming without. If, if, if an assessment increase is approved, then it has, it, it doesn't have as many changes to the budget as one would think. It changes the revenue. It changes the fee structures a little bit. It changes our capital budget, but it really doesn't have that many. So it's, it's very easy to go in, if an assessment increase was approved by the membership, it would be very easy to go in and modify the budget very quickly. So we always go in with the assumption that we are not going to have an assessment increase.
Okay. Do you see any one-time events? For example, we saw the cell tower lease sale. Can we see any one-time events coming up in 2020?
I think that the stump dump is a wild card, especially the legal side of that. That could be a large expense that could hit us. You know, are we going to get any insurance proceeds? Those types of things. You know, we're sitting in June and you're asking me a question that's going to happen in January, February, so that's a long way away. But at this point, other than the stump dump, I would say nothing off the top of my head.
Because rebate came this year, so we won't get one next year at all.
Yeah. And each, and for the new board members, each of the department heads prepares what we call a delta report. And that includes not only the numbers, but, you know, a description as to what's occurring. And my, my labor in lakes is going up because I'm increasing the number of lake rangers from blah to blah, and that's going to cost me this much more in these months. So we don't just give you the numbers, we give you the story behind it.
And changes from one year to next, plus or minus.
Okay. And then they'll, I assume they'll, there'll also be some sort of, yeah, repayment schedule for the water department?
That's included, yes, that is included. And it's also part, that specific element is part of the financial or cash flow budget. Because that's, that has a significant, in, that has a, you know, the half million dollars in, in bond repayment is, is significant. And that gets covered in the cash flow budget, financial budget.
Okay. No questions? No other questions on that? Move on to the golf committee recommendation regarding future Brittany. And Jason Lloyd, the head of the golf department or the golf JAC is here to help us with answering any questions, et cetera. We appreciate that, Jason.
On page seven of your board packet, you'll see that I've put together a brief memo regarding the recommendations from the committee. And then on page nine and ten, you have the recommendation straight from the committee. One of the items that was discussed during the, the GM meeting, and this actually came out of the rec committee, the golf committee meeting, was the possibility or the contemplation of creating a Brittany subcommittee. If you look on page ten, they, the golf committee has come up with a number of ideas. And the idea would be to have a subcommittee to shepherd through those ideas and make sure that this is not a one and done type situation where a year from now, we go, oh, we came up with all these recommendations and what has happened. But this committee would be an ad hoc committee that would meet on an occasional basis to ensure that we are shepherding through those ideas and not just putting them down on paper and then forgetting them two months later.
That would come from the golf committee itself.
The committee, but there, but what was discussed in the rec, in the GM meeting was that we would ask the golf committee to, to do that. But in reality, the idea came, it was discussed at their meeting.
Right.
Who do you see that subcommittee liaison in with in terms of management to see things happen?
I think that we were, well, we didn't discuss that, but I think it would be at the discretion of the golf committee as to who would be on the committee.
If they want one of the liaisons, it'd be one of the liaisons from the golf committee.
And then talking to, to whom did management, is, I guess what I'm wondering, would they talk to maybe Darryl?
Darryl would be first. Darryl would be first marking both.
Absolutely.
These are going to be a lot of cross-reference to a lot of departments to carry these out. Okay, further discussion. Mary, go ahead.
I'd like to see two things added to this. One relates to what we were just talking about. In addition to having a subcommittee that tracks these things, perhaps on a quarterly basis, I'd like to see a new, in the golf newsletter, email newsletter, a status so that the, the membership can see what's going on. And if they're not living up to their end of the bargain, or we're not, we can correct that. The other thing is, and I've probably beaten this one to death before, I'd really like to see a date specified where this whole thing will be reevaluated. Ruth made the point that it's probably going to take two years to see any results.
Yeah, because most of these things are going to take some time to implement. And then we've already noticed that there are some golf groups that have switched their group over to Brittany, so they are helping us out in that manner. But to implement a lot of these, Jason, is that fair to say that we're looking at at least a year to two years before they really get put into effect?
Yes.
Before we can measure them?
Yeah, at this time, we're halfway through the season now, so it's going to take at least a year. But in a couple of years, definitely look at re-review.
So maybe put a date of July twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one would do.
I would, I would recommend that we go through the next season also, so not only this season, but next season.
September, October.
Yeah, I would probably do October as far, you know, let's get beyond the entire season. Because any changes that would be made at that point, either in marketing and so forth, it would then allow us to do that over the winter time and then kick in for the next, the following season. But that would give you two full seasons because Jason's right, we're already halfway through. So you come up, if marketing comes up or a golf committee comes up with a great idea, it may take a month or so to get implemented and you're only going to have partial impact for the year. Plus, we already know that the rounds for Brittany are going to be down this year potentially directly as a result of being closed for several weeks as a result of the stump dump fire.
I think the two years would be a fair estimate. I like the idea of having a closure date that we can look at and say, okay, where's the situation?
Should it be tied somehow with what happens at Burksdale? Or less than nine hole course, and there was some discussion about whether rounds would transfer there or?
Well, if Burksdale floats away in the interim, that's certainly going to change our outlook. And that'll be taken into account.
Yeah, well, I mean, Steve is correct. We could take all these ideas, implement them to the best of our ability, and we could still see the rounds shed at Brittany. I don't know if that was what you were talking about.
Well, I was assuming if, if we closed Burksdale, it might shift the other way back to Brittany.
Very well could. It very well could.
So I'm not sure if that should be part of the reassessment timing?
I would think it'd be added into that for sure. I mean, I'd.
I would think that'd be an automatic if.
Absolutely.
If Burksdale closes, those rounds probably will go someplace and probably Brittany would be a chance for some of the nine hole at least, yeah. But that would be a kind of a exterior component of this.
Asterisk.
Yeah.
Ruth, we're, we're still going to get our monthly rounds. Every month, we're going to get the report on that, what it's costing us to do this. Are we going to find out? For example, in the beginner clinic, who's going to do that? I'm sure Darryl and, and the other managers are going to come up with that because that's going to cost us money. The extra marketing is going to cost us money out there. So we're going to track that on a monthly basis, just like we have been before, correct?
Correct.
So we can see, not, we don't have to wait two years to see what's happening. We can see that probably into next year. We probably won't see it this year. We might. But we'll see it into next year in our monthly reporting, monthly meetings where we'll see how many rounds we're playing, what's it, what's it costing us. And at that point, it might be up to this subcommittee and/or some of the managers to reevaluate what they're doing and maybe refine it, put it in a little different direction. I'm glad to see that somebody, one of my questions is going to be, and then as I read this, we're going to furnish clubs for beginners. Do those beginners mean adults as well, or is, are we talking primarily juniors?
Yeah, it's both. It's all age groups.
And the Friends of Dogwood are going to buy clubs for that? Do we have, we don't have rental clubs out at Metfield, right?
We have rental.
We have rental.
We have rental clubs. But, but that's an issue. If you are a brand new golfer that has never played before, the idea of paying thirty dollars to rent clubs and to pay another so much for balls and stuff like that that you don't have, you've already got sixty, seventy dollars in a round of golf that you don't know if you want to play or not. And in Bella Vista, there are a lot of used good clubs that can be out here. There's one set out here that I can point to right here. But there's a lot of good clubs that are available to donate to them. And if you're not paying that thirty dollars, you're more likely to take a family out, especially if we have kids clubs along with it. But along David's line, there's going to be some expenses. And there's going to be a few of these that are going to be a cost to try that don't work.
Right.
And so there's going to be some additional expenses to start with that the rounds may not equal out.
Right.
And that's what you have to weed out and find out. And I think that's what David's kind of alluding to, that we need to be looking at that. But I think we need to give it plenty of time to really give it an honest attempt, but also need an end date that says this is not going to go on for the next five years because somebody thought of something new to try. So it's, we're going to see if it works.
Right. And to your, to your question, there's, there is a campaign out right now for donations to, to the area for clubs. And there's been a little bit of change in Friends of Highland, or Friends, sorry, Friends of Dogwood. There's now starting to be a hybrid of that and also a Friends of Brittany. So they're working it hard and we're trying to figure it out.
Susan, you want to interject on that?
Yes, I absolutely do.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Absolutely. The effort to get donated clubs is really not a very practical idea from the golf operation standpoint. We don't want to get a bunch of weird stuff, okay?
Junk.
One of the things that Friends of Dogwood is talking about, you know, pretty seriously, is in our, we're going to turn it in September and also have a tournament on Brittany and use the proceeds from that to buy clubs for juniors. And it's an inexpensive, half set kind of things for beginning adults, right? So that we have bags, we have clubs that match, and that they can manage them from a cart perspective.
If, if you wouldn't play with the clubs, you shouldn't donate them. If you wouldn't play with the clubs today, you should not donate them.
Because it's just all, I mean, Paul, I mean, legitimate reasons are a whole bunch mismatched stuff, you know? And we really want it to look, look good, be professional, that, that people can.
Give them a chance.
Can do that. There's been some discussion about another group forming. There's, I know Paul's had some discussion with some of the people there. I'm not sure they're that interested in doing it. Friends of Dogwood has always been Friends of Dogwood and Brittany. We just haven't done much with Brittany, right? So we've got to put that more on the radar and market more to some of these people who seem to have an interest. We'll see if the interest turns into participation with that. And the other thing I just want to make a note of is, most of the things we put on this list were specifically low-cost emails. I mean, doing emails and newsletters does not cost a lot of money and does take a lot of time. So I don't want to waste the season talking about. We don't need to get together the stuff we're going to do and start stuff this year. At least that's my perspective on marketing. Because we are going to market to the general public, I mean, not the general public, outside of Bella Vista. This is really a neighborhood course we need Bella Vista to support.
Thanks, Susan.
How many members, Jason, do you feel would be a good ad hoc committee? Three?
Probably three.
And then maybe one liaison? And Darryl?
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah, for sure.
So you'd pick your liaison.
Kim also.
Kim also for market would be obvious.
Yes.
For Kim.
But the committee members would.
Committee members, three, and then management, two, and then liaison.
Yeah, but the, the employees and the liaison would not be members of the committee. They would be liaison, assistants, helping.
Because I know one issue when First Tee started up, et cetera, they asked for clubs. And they, everybody cleaned out their base, but they didn't sell it, garage sales, everything else. And they have probably a hundred sets that are unusable with no idea what to do with them.
Not anymore. What we do with those clubs that are, the problem with getting donated clubs for juniors is they're too heavy. And so your junior clubs have to be shorter and lighter. You can't cut down an adult club and make it usable for a junior. And the only time we could use adult clubs was for our older kids out there. You know, they were, they were taller than I am. And they could use those. So what we did with those clubs is we turned them in for scrap and sold them. Take them to the recycling and sell them, heads, shafts, everything. You can, you can sell those and make a few bucks off of it, just like picking up empty, yeah.
Cans.
Soda cans. So that's what we do with those unless there's a set that is actually something usable, then you can go online and find a place and you can sell those. One of the guys that we play golf with, Hayden, that's what he does. He goes on and he sells them online, but there are a couple of places there you can, you can see the value of them. I don't want to see us just mishmash set of clubs. You can go down to Golf Academy or you can go online and buy a, a set of clubs that maybe has a driver three wood, six hybrid, seven, nine wedge, seven, nine sand wedge and a putter for under two hundred bucks with a bag.
But even work, even because it's Brittany's short nine hole, even that has, you know, four clubs on the putter, would hit the target market for this activity in most cases.
And it's a lot better because it's a lighter set. It weighs half as much.
Right size, right size set.
Any other ideas or questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Just a thought, possible suggestion. I really like this idea of a subcommittee. But hopefully you'll make it include the residents and the friends in that area. Maybe not on the committee, maybe on the committee. Let you guys decide, but the residents at the public meeting sure supported keeping Brittany. And I hope, as Susan mentioned as well, they'll step up to the plate.
Good idea.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say, is, is there a possibility of sending a letter to those residents? I mean, they were very vocal about wanting it and wanting to do all of these ideas. Can we send a letter to them, reminding them when the golf committee meeting is, to join it, to volunteer, to help keep it open?
Couldn't we do an email? Because we don't have a list of the people that attended that meeting.
Did we separate them out, Kim? Just when we sent letters to them all, we sent letters to those residents around there? Was it letters and or emails? Letters, extra letters? So we don't have to ring emails, do we?
Not necessarily.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Well, I want to make sure we don't omit the, the obvious, that the, the board is in favor of keeping Brittany open.
We've met on that channel. I want to hear all the input first. Anybody else that hasn't spoken have an idea or suggestion or input? Okay. The board will be voting next week to carry this forward. I'm, I'm assuming they will from the positive. Let's ask for a consensus vote at this time. This is not a vote. This is simply a consensus so that they know, the committee knows that we've got to go ahead. So all of those who would support the idea at this time for next week's vote, can we have a vote?
Support to keep it open?
Yeah. Support for the board or JAC to go ahead. So you, appears we have enough to vote for next year or next week so that you can start making plans towards that direction. Assume that's going to happen, Jason. But we can't vote officially till next week.
Understand. Good. Thank you.
Okay. And if at any time, obviously we'll discuss this again next week. So if new things come up and you think of them, please bring them to next week's meeting and we'll discuss again because Jason will be here again for that one. So thank you, Jason. We appreciate you stepping in today and it helped us out.
On page eleven of your board packet, you'll see a recommendation from the golf committee, a nomination for a new committee member. They're nominating Mr. Mertz. On page twelve, you will see his association committee application. On the following page, on page thirteen, you'll see the recommendation or the nomination from the Lakes Committee for a new member, Mr. Adams. And on the following page, you will see that gentleman's application also.
And we'll be voting both of those next Thursday?
Yes.
So be sure you check out those applications to. So be sure you check out those applications to go with those. And they both come highly recommended with lots of background, so.
Yeah, uh, both candidate, or both nominated individuals were unanimously approved by the respective committee. Uh, on page fifteen, uh, this is just a notification. Uh, the good news is that, uh, the Highlands Stumped Up, now the Highlands, to give you a little bit of historical perspective, Highlands Stumped Up was, uh, has been, had been open for thirty-five years. It was closed by order of ADEQ. Uh, on May twenty-ninth, uh, ADEQ, uh, approved, uh, our plans to remediate the site. These plans had been prepared by FTN, uh, so that is really good. Uh, we are reasonably optimistic that we will be able to complete the work by the end of the year. Don't hold us to that. It could be a month or so after that, uh, but our goal is the end of the year. Uh, the downside of this is that at the time that we were preparing the budget, uh, we had absolutely no idea how much it was gonna cost, uh, because, uh, we had just hired FTN. They hadn't even started working on preparing, uh, plans for ADEQ. So we put in a hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget. Uh, we now have the total cost estimate at three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, uh, and, uh, that does not include, uh, they are asking for a thirty percent contingency. The reason why the contingency is much higher than you would normally see is because part of the plans are gonna, we're gonna have to do, um, uh, test holes to find the edges, because it could be larger or smaller, uh, depending upon, uh, you know, what you can see from the surface. Remember, this is thirty-five years old, this site, so, um, you know, it's hard to know exactly where the edges are, uh, so that's why it has a much higher, uh, contingency than what, what you would normally see. Uh, so no additional approval is required by the board. This is an operating expense. Uh, we're just letting you know that, uh, our budget is gonna take a significant hint hit as a result of this. Um, and with regards to cash flow, um, I'm gonna talk later on about, provide the board an update regarding, uh, the sale of Arcmo, uh, but the secured loan that we had when we originally were talking about, our cash flow was for a million dollars. Uh, Arcmo is, is, uh, is scheduled to, or contracted to sell for the full appraised value, which is one million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So effectively, what we're doing is we're gonna take that four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars extra and apply it to, uh, the excess on, uh, taking care of the Highlands Stumped Up. Um, we have still not heard anything regarding the other three dumps. We have plans into ADEQ. Um, I've been told that we should not be concerned in any way. Uh, the ADEQ has a lot go on their plate right now as a result of the flooding in other parts of the state, uh, so I'm not concerned that it's taking a little bit longer than we, one would hope to get the answer on the other three sites. But Steve, when you were talking about, um, you know, unknowns for the next year, you know, uh, we don't know when we're gonna get a final answer from ADEQ regarding the other three sites. Um, you know, we're hopeful that, uh, those are gonna be able to be closed for a reasonable amount of money, but until we get a final answer from ADEQ, we won't know for certain.
The three older sites, aren't they pretty much overgrown at this point?
They're all overgrown. Uh, the one site was closed ten to fifteen years ago. The other two sites were closed twenty to twenty-five years ago. Um, they're, they are completely overgrown. We are optimistic that it will, that ADEQ will allow us to formally close them in their mind, in their eyes, uh, at a reasonable expense. Um, but until we get a response back from ADEQ, we won't know for certain.
The Highlands dump though is not overgrown?
It is not overgrown because it was still in operation at the time that we were ordered to close it. Any questions?
Um, just a comment, I, I really recognize FTN as leaders in their field. However, FTN originally was hopeful that we could do three six-inch layers of clay to cover the Highlands Stump Dump, and part of that hundred thousand was their estimation. And, uh, now, again, we're being, uh, added to significantly with a thirty percent modifier, and, uh, I do, I do recognize, David's more versed in this than I am, that these geo-synthetic clay liners are common practice in the covering of landfills and other, even some golf course-type covers, but requiring us to do this in regards to a stump dump, uh, anyway, I'm, I'm still agreeing that we should do it, but, come on.
We do what they ask us to do.
Yeah.
Tom, in that regard, are we, are we looking to ERM at all in that? And, and what we might have to do there? Would they come up with a, an argument with ADEQ saying we don't have to have the geotextile? Or is this gonna be such a hard and fast ADEQ thing that we'll just have to do it?
They have stated that, uh, these plans are approved, and I think we're better off proceeding as, as is.
Okay.
We don't have a final plan yet for Trafalgar, right?
Not yet, no. No, we're working on it, but, uh, not just, not yet.
Does this cost give us any idea what Trafalgar remediation might be in size, in comparison to like size of Highlands versus Trafalgar?
The, the two sites are so, so significantly different, it's, it's hard. Um, I did provide ERM with a copy of the approved plans for Highlands, uh, to see if that, that could help them, you know, shape their plans, uh, but it's, they're such different sites, what I've been told. I'm not an expert in this field, but, uh, I've been told that the sites are very different, and so, um, uh, we're working, you know, I'm just gonna kind of, based upon these questions, I'm just gonna flow into the next item on the agenda, which is the Trafalgar Fire Site. Um, you know, first off, I'm very pleased that, uh, the fire is out. Um, all, uh, trench burning is, is complete. Uh, the air curtain technology, which, uh, we were renting those things, they're, they've already been taken away, so we're, we're done. Uh, we did a drone flight on Monday, so if you've not seen our stunt, our website recently, take a look at that. It gives you a real good view of what it looks like. The only thing you can't really tell from the drone footage is, is this extreme, uh, change in elevation from where the weir is located to the upper section is a hundred and thirty-foot drop. Is that correct?
It's not quite that much, but it is a significant, yeah, a hundred, a hundred and twenty.
And when you look at that on the, uh, the drone footage, uh, it kinda looks flat. Uh, it flattens it out, so it, it, it's significant. So stabilization of the site is, um, they're still working on that to ensure the stability. Um, you know, I, I think it's, it's hard to say exactly how much that effort's going to take, but, uh, um, I'm ver, I'm much more optimistic than early on when we started the process. If you recall, we were talking about an estimate of four million dollars, but it could go hot, higher depending upon how things go. Um, things have gone very well, so, um, I'm still sticking with that four million dollar estimate, but, you know, it, it, you could still see a swing of a quarter million bucks based upon how things go. Um, but, but that's much better than, at one point, I was thinking, wow, we could spend four, but we could hit five or six million. We're now looking at four and maybe four and a quarter, something of that nature.
Including remediation.
The whole thing. The, the, the estimates that we provided, the four million dollars plus or minus, was always the phase one, phase two, the whole thing. Um, what we didn't wanna do was, um, uh, give you only half the information, you know, because, uh, that would all, you know, we don't, we wanna make sure that we give you the whole, um, the whole estimate and not have everybody focus on four million dollars, okay, four million dollars for this, and then plus, plus, plus. We didn't wanna do that. Is, we, we feel it's gonna come in pretty darn close to the four million dollars, but you're gonna need to give us some latitude of quarter to half a million bucks, because we still have some unknowns out there. But we're, we're definitely getting much closer now than we have been previously, and by this time next week, we're gonna know even more so, I think.
Now, is the trench burning done?
It's, it's completely done. Uh, they finished on Monday. It was later than we originally had anticipated, uh, but the rain is just.
Yeah.
You know, Doug and I had a conversation the other day. If, if we hadn't had such an abnormal amount of rain, I wouldn't be surprised if we would have come in a half a million dollars less, because, you know, we had a lot of rain early on when, uh, we were having to shut down the site, and it was at, you know, when, when they were heavily into fighting the fire, um, you know, our hourly rate at that point was like ten thousand bucks. And there was times that we had to shut down for four, five hours. Um, so those, you know, that's expensive shutdowns. Um, but even as we started going away from the fighting of the fire, we still had lengthy shutdowns. Um, there's, there's some drone footage, there's two, two drone footages, uh, two different dates where you see the equipment is not moving at all, uh, for an entire day 'cause it's just so wet. Well, that is, those are expensive days. Um, so.
So what are they doing now?
They're stabilizing the site. So that, and that was part of, you know, you, you can't just put out the fire, you're gonna make sure that all that stuff's not gonna wash downstream, uh, and when you're dealing with an elevation change of under a hundred and thirty feet, that's extreme. Uh, so, uh, we have, uh, a, a surveyor that is working with us, um, you know, and making sure that when they grade this site, it is, it is to the specs that ADEQ has dictated. Has specs that we have provided to ADEQ and they have, have reviewed, would be the accurate term.
And has, uh, air quality monitoring, is that suspended?
That's, yeah, that's, uh, those, that equipment was, uh, sent home once we stopped the, um, the trench burning.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, we'll end.
Uh, the sale of Arcmo, just wanted to give everybody an update on that. The, uh, agreement was executed with recasting LLC on May thirty-first. Uh, we are anticipating the deal will close in sixty days. Um, we've been in contact with the title insurance company and all the other things that you have to do. We've been providing them with, uh, copies of previous, um, surveys and so forth, so, uh, it appears to be moved along, along nicely without any hiccups at this time.
Yeah, I've also been in contact with the attorney for recasting, and we're working together on drafting the various assignments and things like that that are needed to complete the transaction.
And just for clarification for the public, the entire parcel was included?
Yes, all three hundred and sixty-six acres, both Arkansas and Missouri side.
I want to be sure that everybody knows the entire parcel.
No, it's the entire parcel. It's, it's the, uh, it's the Arkansas and Missouri portion, the whole thing.
Okay. Any other questions on that? We have conflict of interest now.
So it's required that we, uh, update these annually, um, and the new members of the board had to sign these before they were put on the ballot, so I need updated conflict of interest forms from, from the other, um, other members of the board. Do you guys have copies of these? Okay. Yeah, if you could, uh, review those and sign them and get them back to me, please, so that I can, it's, it's also a part of our, our audit procedure, so whenever we have an, an external audit, they ask us for copies of these statements as well, so appreciate your help in that.
Make sure Doug gets the copy when you're done.
Um, if you recall, going back, uh, two months, uh, the board talked about making modification to the board attendance policy. Uh, the Rules and Regulations Committee is gonna take this, uh, issue up on June twenty-seventh. They're gonna meet immediately after the completion of the regular meeting, uh, so that will be the, uh, the subject matter of that meeting.
Okay. Okay, at this time, open forum. We wanna remind you that you have three minutes to speak, please. Bruce?
Bruce Portello, Three Kirk Circle, Bella Vista. Uh, I wanted to compliment Mr. Dooley on a well-written letter to the editor last week with a couple of exceptions. Our previous board licensed our common property for use by the public without the required membership vote. If there was a required membership vote, the board would've done so. They marketed Bella Vista as a tourist destination. The POA has never marketed Bella Vista using that terminology. He must've confused this with the city, but I'll let that slip. And then finally, we want to retain the unique qualities that make Bella Vista the best place in the country to live. I couldn't agree more with him, and I've placed a list up here, uh, which is on the site. There were twenty-seven projects completed by the board and management over the last three years, and these projects were big and small, uh, and they involved new builds, they involved restoration, and they involved updates. Uh, and some of these projects, like the BV Bar and Grill, have been met with a great measure of success. Uh, admittedly, the place is open to the public. I'll say that. But regardless, uh, it has taken old, worn-out facilities in the village and restored them, and, uh, they're seeing a lot of usage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks, Bruce. Good morning, everyone. Kevin Dooley, one twenty-two Leister Drive. Let me start by welcoming Steve and Tia and Jerry to the board, and thank you for your service, and thanks to everyone on the board for your service as well. I've spoken about members feeling that they had been left behind by the direction that the board had been, had been going. Specifically, the perception has been that there's been too much emphasis on public access and not enough emphasis on the membership. A couple of board directors have told me that members elect directors to make these decisions. I see it a little bit differently. I believe that we elect directors to represent our decisions. So when Steve decided to run for the board on the simple platform of members first, that was something that really resonated with me, and it, obviously, it resonated with thousands of other members as well. So I believe this election is a mandate from the membership, that every discussion, every decision has to be looked at from the perspective of what is the possible benefit to the membership, and equally importantly, what are the possible negative impacts to the membership? So I hope that we're all on the same page with that. I can't say it any better than Steve has said it, always members first. Thank you.
Thank you. I can assure you, Kevin, that this entire board has always had the best interest of the membership in mind for everything they've done.
Mm-hmm. There have been some negative impacts on some of our members as a result of the decisions the board has made. I think you would probably agree with that as well.
Not everybody agrees with all of our decisions. I'll certainly agree with that.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else for open forum? If not, we have a regular board meeting next Thursday night at six o'clock, and as Tom has said, the rules and regs will meet right after that. Fireflies and tailgating was moved from last Saturday night to June twenty-ninth at six thirty at Blowing Springs, and Tia, I'm sure that everything is scheduled the same, it's just moved for two weeks.
Yep.
GM meeting is Thursday, uh, the July eleventh at two-thirty. That is a closed meeting. And the work session will be the eighteenth at nine o'clock. Once again, regular board. Once again, regular board Thursday, the twenty-fifth at six o'clock. And then end August, for those of you writing calendars, it's August eighth is the GM meeting, August fifteenth is the work session, and August twenty-second is the regular board meeting. And then we will start budgeting from there. Anything else for the good of the cause? If not, we stand adjourned.